For community of the whole, welcome back 2018. We have one item on the agenda today. The downtown civic core plan. John?
Thank you, Council President and Council members. We're excited to be here again tonight to wrap up this project with you. It's a great night to be here because of what's going to happen later in the evening, of course. But before we get there, we hope we can entertain you for a few minutes with the downtown civic core vision and action and vision plan, vision and action plan, I should say. We're going to give you an update of what has been added to the plan since the draft you reviewed on December 11th. I'm going to go through that very quickly, leave some time for you to ask some questions, and then wrap up and get you teed up so that you can adopt it via resolution at your council meeting later this evening. So I'd like to introduce again Alex Doopy with the firm of MIG. Alex is here for his final appearance here at the City of Renton, at least for now, and he's going to give us our presentation tonight. Welcome, Alex.
Well, thank you, and everybody, welcome to 2018. We've made it through. I just wanted to give a brief presentation to talk essentially about what we've done since December. You had, we presented on December 11th for some, the draft plan, and really not focusing on, you know, the deep dive into the plan like we did with the last committee of the whole, really focus on what those changes are, and then talk a bit about some of the cost estimates because that is a big new addition to, to the project, and, you know, essentially wraps up the major elements of, of the plan. So just wanted to step through, we'll talk briefly about that. Within your packet, you do have the December 11th presentation that I had given a while back, just if you need more information or you have questions from that. Again, I'm not going to step through that, but you have that for your use. The major elements of the plan and the major kind of formatting of the plan has not changed. We have made some refinements and corrections, essentially some editorial comments through some of the strategies and of the other actions, primarily to either streamline or to reorder so that they make a bit more sense. But it's primarily adding the cost estimates are the big one, as well as an executive summary, which we reformat it pretty significantly so that it becomes more of a marketing piece for downtown. It's something you can take when you meet with folks to essentially talk about the plan and what the vision is for, for the district. And then just as a reminder, the Renton Planning Commission did recommend adoption on December 6th of the plan, provided that we would add cost estimates into that. We've done that, but I just want to make sure that that is up there as well. And then from your process, we met on December 11th. We talked about the plan. We didn't have those cost estimates in there, so we'll spend some time on that tonight. And then this evening, council will consider the draft Renton Downtown Civic Core Vision and Action Plan dated January 2018, which is the one that you have in your packet, which is the complete document. We are asking for a recommendation that the committee of the whole concur with the planning commission staff recommendation to approve the plan by resolution. So this plan you have in front of you, we are asking for adoption by resolution this evening. Just as a reminder, we are talking about not just the civic core, but the entire downtown district. So this plan evolved from really a very specific civic core plan to really a complete downtown plan for, you know, all of downtown Renton, which has been great because they do operate together. They're not independent of one another, and so the plan documents both of those, those specific areas in a holistic fashion. And it is based on public engagement, whether it's traditional or online. I have an example here of the project website. We have done an extensive amount of public engagement that these strategies are based on. So the number of people that have been a part of this has been extraordinary for a project that's really a very focused geographic area. And we continue to update this, this website with current information. Just as a quick reminder, we do have a vision, organizing themes and strategies, and I'm not going to step through each of the pieces, but just to talk briefly about some of the organizing themes, because we have made some refinements to those lines on the map, primarily in two areas. Right next to the parking, the city center parking garage, we have changed one of those areas to deactivate instead of create because there is already some, some pieces there, and then a couple other small refinements on those lines as well. So not major changes, but just, you know, getting into a few of the details on, on that map to make it as effective as possible. For the most part, the strategies are broken up into six, design and development strategies. I'll step through each of these just to show some of the key differences that we had from the previous plan. Figure 1.2, which is the opportunities map, we have made a few small changes. You'll probably not notice them on this, but it's primarily about facade improvements. So, you know, if there's a half a block or a building that we felt needed to be identified for facade improvements, we've made some of those changes. But for the most part, this map is the same, which is those few, few small revisions. We did meet with the airport to talk about some of the clear zone issues, and we wanted to make sure that was incorporated in here. So under DDS1, we have added within the Renton Municipal Code to make sure that we are in compliance with FAA. That's already part of your code, but we just wanted to identify it explicitly in case any buildings are higher because we are recommending some height bonuses depending on the type of use. And then we added some specific images for signage to show some very differences that would work downtown. Under DDS2, primarily, this is the programming table. This is the, the area where we're looking at all the public spaces, the piazza, you know, all of Tonkin Park, all of the other spaces. And we, there is a large table, Table 1, that has programming. We made some minor changes to that, just, you know, looking back to see what should be in there, what shouldn't. So each of those programmed elements are generally the same, but there's been a couple small revisions. We've done some word changes to strategies, but nothing that would change the content or the context of those strategies. It's really just, you know, refinements and editorial comments or editorial changes. And then we did add some strategies to the types and detail for improvements, primarily around Memorial Park and others. We tried to get a little bit more specific. And here's the map. One thing we changed on the map, we've identified, rather than just the gateway, which was Memorial Park initially, we've identified both second and third as gateways, and we've provided strategies to address both of those. Otherwise, this map is about the same. For DDS3, we've updated the proposed arts trail, and that is in recognition of a meeting that we had with the Regional Arts Commission to talk about where that arts trail might, might go and what it might look like. We also added some recommendations that they had requested in within that meeting, primarily around how do you actually do this? There's a lot of things that we're asking them to do, as well as other nonprofits. How do you start to coordinate that? And the big one under DDS3 is the recommendation for an arts coordinator. Whether that's part-time or full-time, that's really dependent on, you know, the job and what's out there, but acknowledging that this does take time and take effort. And within the map, the arts trail changes are primarily along Cedar River, so connecting the dots between the Burnett Lanier Park and the library, so adding some potential interpretive elements there or art, but also, you know, really making that connection between the trail, between the Cedar River Trails and City Hall. So using that Renton connector as a way to, you know, showcase art and have it as an attraction. So it completes the, the trail, if you will. Under DDS4, which is primarily about safe and attractive streets, the one piece that we were missing here was the river street concepts, and these are primarily for Williams and Wells. And so we've added some, some concepts for that which could show, you know, how you actually would start to do a river street. These are slightly different than a traditional street. We've been talking about how you do interpretive elements, how you incorporate water, you know, really strong green elements into this while still providing strong economic development opportunities, but, you know, focusing on the pedestrian, the interpretive elements, but also how this integrates with the streets. So we've just added some graphics to, to show how that might, that might look. DDS5, we've changed some reordering of the strategies primarily around, you know, if you want to do something with a parking garage, you know, when do the police relocate versus doing those improvements? So we've switched some of the order of those to make them more realistic, but also added definition 4-1 maker spaces, and that is under DDS5. So you'll see with most of these revisions that they're just refinements, not really additions or major changes. And that's the same with DDS6, is minor reordering of some strategies. Nothing major. It's all the same stuff, just making sure that it's in the right order. So with that, we turn into transit planning strategies, and these are essentially the same except for one small change, and that is changing, at least in the short term, the alignment for the F-line. Originally, we had that going all the way down Logan Avenue. The question came to be is if we want to close off Logan for the farmer's market or another event now before it's a festival street, you know, why do we have to go through the effort of, you know, rerouting the F-line if we don't have to? So using the existing transit street as needed until that festival street comes online, and then working on, on moving the F-line, you know, you know, out of the area within the long-term plan. So again, it's a, an interim improvement, but one that makes it a little bit easier for you to implement some of the festival, the interim festival street changes. So I want to focus most of the attention tonight on implementation. So just as a reminder, we've broken up implementation strategies as quick wins, which are really things that could happen now with, you know, limited or, you know, no resources. Doesn't take a lot of money to get a lot of these things off the ground. Short-term actions within five years, and then mid or long-term actions, which are five, five to 10 years. I want to stress that the city is not responsible for all of these specific projects and actions within, within the plan. As you read through implementation, you'll see that some of it is City of Renton, some of it's Municipal Arts Commission. Some of it are nonprofits. Some are the downtown partnership. So it's a variety of different leads that will work in concert with one another to develop and implement these strategies, but it's not always the city that has to take the lead on these projects. We revised and refined the list of funding sources. We've also added notes, which I'll show just in a second to give a little bit more detail for reading the matrix, and then also refined the costs, which we'll talk about in just a second. This is a difficult page to read, I know, but I want to just show this as, you know, these are all the various funding sources and potential people who might be involved with this. And the notes column at the bottom really starts to stress about, okay, what is exactly within the cost element estimates? What does this mean for staffing? What are some considerations you need to think about as you move forward? And with implementation, we have three main sections I want to focus on. The first is the cost, which is new this evening. That's the main element. Primary responsibility and partners. That's where I was talking about where it's not necessarily always the City of Renton. It often is, but not always the City of Renton who's doing the, the lead implementation. This column is what identifies that, on who should take the lead. Often, there are partnerships between the various agencies. And then we've done a fair bit of work in refining the, the potential funding sources. So we have general cost ideas, what this is going to take, where does the money come from? Is it capital improvement program? Is it general fund, bond, levy, private funding? You know, what are the various sources that, that might be used for that specific type of project? So for capital cost, those were primarily consultant-generated, particularly the street improvements. We went through a pretty exhaustive process to look at, you know, with the concepts that are on, on the, in the plan now, for the level of detail that we have, what would that take? We broke those out block by block, looked at what each of the cross-sections were, and assigned costs for those, both hard and soft costs. So that's the capital cost for the, the just basic improvements, but also what would it take to design, to implement, to manage all of those specific pieces. The, the big piece on the capital side is that the transit projects are likely KC Metro or Sound Transit-led. Certainly, the City of Renton has a role in that, but other than, you know, with most capital projects, they'd be city-led, but the transit projects may not because that, you know, that's a much different process. So I just want to identify that not everything in the capital projects are, are city-led projects. There are some projects in there that might, that will require some additional study, and so we've left those as TBD or to be determined. They may or may not be city-led, but things like moving the police station out of the parking garage to another location. We don't know where they would go, you know, what that other location would be, or what improvements would that be. It might require additional study. So there are a few tasks in there that would require additional study to identify those, those costs. There's very few, but for the most part, those are the ones that will require a little bit extra time to think about. For costs that are limited or identified as not applicable, most of those tasks are things that could fit within a city work program. If it's updating zoning code or site design standards, developing, you know, plans or future studies, many of those things can be identified within an existing work program, so we didn't assign cost to those specific issues. And just some examples of capital projects, pavilion reconstruction, piazza construction, that's actually in your capital improvement program already, both for planning and design. You know, the cost for a festival street, for example, depending on what that ultimate design is, you know, it could be between $8 million. And that's, that's a key piece, again, with these capital costs, is that we have concepts now, which is essentially assumes full build-out. When you get to design, you know, those costs, those costs could change depending on what that specific design is, that is to be determined. Some of the other pieces, like TS2, which is some of the transit center improvements, that includes both the layover, but also includes South Renton Transit Center. So as that starts to come up and you start to get that new transit hub, we've identified costs as a proportion of that. One that I know is, we've spent a lot of time on and we talked at length about is wayfinding, and how would you start to implement wayfinding? We've done general cost estimates by sign type. The key piece with wayfinding in terms of cost is really getting a fabricator under contract to start to develop that, and that would be the next step of this process. We've identified and have solidified those designs. The next step would be to actually take those to a, to a fabricator or get bids from a series of fabricators to start to do that. But in the interim, we've identified specific costs for those types of, types of signs.
Excuse me, Alex?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
The monument cost, is that including installation, or is that just production?
Those would include installation as well. And I want to stress, you know, it depends. We've identified generally how the types of materials that they would be constructed. The next step is really for a fabricator to start to do construction drawings for those pieces, but that's why you have this range for that. So these generally include installation as well.
Follow-up. I guess my concern on, on the sign, and it needs a lot more discussion, in my opinion, is how they're being made and how, it's really nice for us to go out and spend $20,000 on a sign, and then we have to continually maintain that sign and our city staff, the original signs that were suggested before, our, our city shops, our sign shop couldn't, couldn't repair them because they didn't have the equipment. You know, they'd get too specialized. So, I mean, I just concerned that down the line, the council take a hard look at, at how the signs are developed and made because they have to be maintained afterwards. And if we don't maintain them, then they don't look good, and it detracts from what we're trying to do. But to have to go to a specialty shop every time we try and fix something, it's kind of like, and I'll use the example, the railing as you come off of 405 onto Sunset. It's a special design. We don't have, so sometimes you go up there and you look at months before we can get, get it fabricated, and people look at the city and say, man, can't they even fix a simple fence? So I, those are things that I, you know, as we adopt this, I just think we need to be cognizant of.
Well, that's a, that's a great point. One thing, we did meet with the city sign shops, and I think got some great feedback from them about, one, are they capable of producing these signs? And they were, they were clear in that, you know, we, this is not the, the type of sign that we, we produce. But they gave great feedback in terms of the design from a maintenance standpoint. You know, one, don't do etched metal, because if somebody graffiti's it, you're not going to be able to get the paint out of. So, so we have incorporated that into some of the revisions, but it's certainly something to consider as you move, move forward. But that's, you know, that's typical of any sign and any wayfinding program, you know, not just Renton, but, but any city. I think as we, as you get into the fabrication, we've, we have recommendations on what that would be. Specific fabricators may have ideas on coatings, for example, that can help with, with the maintenance.
No, I, I, that's just a concern down the line, because I've been, been around these signs for a long time, and...
It's, it's a very good point, and I think staff intends, when it moves the wayfinding sign system into its own project, it does need to look at responsibilities for maintenance, which signs are maintained by what department, or are they maintained in some other way? The beauty of these systems is they're very advanced now out there in the world, and I think the fabricators bring along with them some ideas for how you to manage the maintenance on your own, or how they can give you a package where you might buy some extra pieces and parts and store them, so that when you do have to go out and maintain and make a, a switch out, then you've got that product right there and available for you. So I think that those are all really good comments, and I think that they have to be part of the, the management of the project from this point on. Go ahead.
Just some examples of other, other projects. And again, for these, these cost items, these are not, not a complete list within the plan. I've pulled some examples of various projects within, within the plan itself. There are the larger capital projects, which we just discussed, but there are also small-scale projects that, that go into and make really kind of the bulk of a lot of the plan. Basic things like adding street lighting, you know, replacing lighting or adding lighting where people have told us they feel unsafe. You know, so starting to build upon that. But also replacing missing street trees. There are a number of tree wells that don't have, have trees, so identifying costs and adding those into the plan to make sure that they are identified and it's allocated for it to, to implement these specific pieces. We do have a few studies. We weren't able to accomplish everything within this, this plan, but things that were identified throughout this process. You know, developing something like a marketing plan for the pavilion and the surrounding areas. And some of the organizational strategies we talked about, maybe you should do a different lease agreement, or a different type of lease agreement. How do you actually start to get different businesses and organizations in there to take, take, you know, better advantage of, of the location even, even today? So things like marketing plant, plans, or developing a housing investment strategy. Our retail consultants said the biggest thing, you know, going for strong retail is to have a lot of people living nearby. So actually developing a housing strategy for downtown that can help support some of the stuff that's already happening. One piece, and that this is one that's not a City of Renton-led project, but, you know, evaluating the feasibility of a parking and business improvement area. That's something that typically funds a downtown association, you know, using different types of revenue. So those types of studies are things that can be done by the Renton Downtown Partnership. Certainly, the City of Renton has a, a role in that, but this is one of those examples where the City of Renton is not always in the lead on, on that process. So there are a few of these studies peppered throughout, throughout the plan for future consideration. And then finally, from a staffing standpoint, we do recommend, not necessarily additional staffing, but either if it was additional staffing, or re-classifying staff to help organize some of the downtown efforts. You know, successful downtowns have downtown coordinators. You know, and that's a big piece of, of many towns, whether it's, you know, small or large, that actually start to organize a focused effort in downtown Renton. The other piece I talked about, one, was potentially an arts coordinator, at least part-time, to start organizing some of the pieces between, say, the Arts Commission, the Arts Trail, the City of, the City of Renton, and Downtown Partnership. So again, it's some of those coordination pieces that, again, are not necessarily funded through City of Renton, but could be funded through the 1% arts program. So it's, it's not always general fund that, that funds staffing. The other piece for this, and I think primarily, that's actually already happening to some degree, is to really strengthen the downtown partnership, you know, with, whether it's merging other organizations like Piazza Renton or others, to really make the downtown partnership the key organizational factor in, in downtown. That will require hiring an executive director to do that, do that work. And so there, the partnership is already on that track to, to be looking at some of these things. But again, we wanted to make sure these are identified in the plan because we feel these are critical pieces to, you know, have the plan be successful and move forward in good speed. And then I just want to highlight, we, we do have some other things that are not part of the adoption package, but we do have some appendices that are under a separate cover, and that is the public engagement summary. We have about 825 pages of public engagement. It's about two page, two inches thick. We didn't stick it into the document. It is there for reference and availability. But we also have other things. We've, we've looked at some best practices for food carts, specifically semi-permanent ones, what other cities are doing. We've provided some examples of how you might do a parking business improvement area, some analyses that Leland has done in other communities, as well as housing investment strategies. So again, these aren't part of the adoption package, but I want to highlight that there is some other work out there that staff is using as a resource to further the plan.
Okay, Alex, thanks so much. So just to recap, the recommendation tonight for the committee of the hold is to concur with the planning commission and staff recommendation to approve adoption of the Renton Downtown Civic Core Vision and Action Plan dated January 2018 by resolution. To wrap up tonight, I would like to give a shout out to the Community Advisory Committee, which was one of the many committees that was involved in representing the broader community, both in downtown and Renton. Gene Sins is here tonight. He was a member of that group and, and has joined us to show his support for the plan, and we appreciate his engagement and involvement in this, and all the other members as well. Unfortunately, I'm just going to note for the record that we missed listing one of the members of the CAC in the plan, and we will be getting that into the final version that's adopted. And that person is Rolanda Vineyard Baker. She's with Wasatch, and she's the manager of the Properties Metropolitan Collection, REVO 225 and Burnett Station Apartments. Unfortunately, we, for whatever reason, missed her name on the list, and we're going to make sure we get that on there. She was a very good participant at some of the meetings that we had, and want to make sure that she's noted for that. That's all we have tonight. Thank you very much.
All right.
Don, Don has...
Well, just one more issue on the downtown plan that I read in there, is that your recommendation is we go back to parking meters?
There, there is a recommendation for stronger parking management downtown, and that, it could be, could be meters over time, but at the moment now, at least stronger enforcement of, you know, the one and a half or two-hour meter times, or the parking times. And so that's, that's in an effort to actually start to use the municipal part, the city center parking garage more, more effectively. So using your resources better and actually, you know, helping fund some of the other, the other pieces through those, those revenue.
And I guess one of your recommendations is that we most likely need to update our parking ordinance so that they can't park in the same block?
That's, that's correct.
And I mean, that's, that's, that's something we can do without any cost.
I think that's already on the book.
Well, there's, there's a, there's a little glitch in that ordinance. It's, you know, and I'll refer to Bellevue, because Bellevue has, you can't park in the same block. So you can't take and move your car around the block and then come park again. And the way our ordinance is, you can do that, or move your car a foot or two, so after two hours, you could move your car six or eight feet and then still be, get another two hours. And that's, and that's kind of what's happening in a lot of downtown. And so that, that's something I think we could do very inexpensively.
I've gotten a ticket for that.
Well, I'm just, this, things have changed since you got your last parking ticket. But anyway, and, you know, I just think that's something that we, the council can take a, take a look at as a remedial step, because it, it doesn't take a metal giant to drive down Third Avenue and see which businesses people are parking in front of all day, which always amazes me that I take, I need to, need that parking, they complain to the city that we need parking, but yet we park our, our cars right in front of our business and figure out how we can jockey them so we're there all day, keeping that space away from the customer that I need to keep my doors open.
Yeah, it's a challenge.
It's a challenge, so we need to, I think we need to take a look at that. And then, if I understand your recommendation right, on the, on the parking garage, that now we give two hours free parking, which is great, but people have to take a ticket. So maybe changing that policy a little bit would, would help people?
Yeah, you know, in, in a general sense, the, the parking recommendations are designed to, one, avoid some of the stuff that you're talking about now, is, you know, having people sit in that spot or, or move and then not be that far, far apart. So it's to better use, pretty much an empty garage, with the exception of the park and ride for KC Metro. So that, that could be a variety of things. It could be different times on the street versus what's, what's in the parking garage now. But it could also, you know, really come down to enforcement and making sure that your code is accurate and, and clear. That was one of the first things that Fair Empires told us when they reviewed the parking code, is that it's somewhat confusing about what you can and can't, can't do. So those are easy things that are quick wins, that really don't take a lot of time to implement, whereas enforcement, if you're adding staff, might be a little bit more of a heavy lift to, to get there. lift to, to get there.
Any additional questions on the civic core plan?
No, I just have a comment.
Go ahead, Armando.
So I was pretty vocal about wanting a downtown plan four years ago, and, and I really appreciate the effort and the amount of input that you got from the public and the business owners, and, and the whole process, I think was fantastic. And I don't know that we'll be able to get it done by next year, but it's definitely, it gives us the blueprint and the outline of what we'd like to see in moving downtown forward, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, it's, it's been a great process, and, and it's also a long-term process, so, and that's why we push some projects further out, because they take not just planning, but also, if it's a street improvement, you have to design it. You have to get a, you know, you have to get a designer on board, you have to find the money to, to do that. Those are things that take a longer period of time, whereas, you know, a lot of this stuff, programming can happen tomorrow. So there's, there's things that you could really do pretty quickly to start to, you know, just kind of build on the stuff that's already happening. So it's been a great project.
Go ahead, Arma, go ahead, Caroline.
I especially like how it's arranged with the short term and the quick wins, because people want to see our efforts, you know, come to life. And we understand that a lot of these projects are going to be 10 years long. But I would kind of like a better understanding of, you know, what that list looks like for the short term and the quick wins, and then how you're going to coordinate all of that, you know, in advance of doing the other projects. I guess, you know, we have one year for this plan to gel, but I'm assuming we're going to try to start some of these things sooner, right? Some of the real quick wins?
I wonder if you could clarify the, the one year to, to, for the plan to gel? Do I want to be a lack of your question?
I thought the, I thought the understanding was it was going to take the rest of 2018 to have this completely formalized, as far as the details of what we're going to be doing.
I think generally, you know, the, the plan's pretty broad, and there are a lot of actions, both the, on the quick wins, short terms and long terms. I think the next step will be for the various departments that would be affected to kind of consider these actions and which ones they can integrate, whether or not it's a possib, possibility of integrating them into 2018 work programs. But probably most importantly, for ones that would take funding, is which ones would be put forward through the budgeting process for 2019, 2020, and then also for the levy that's being considered. So I think that there, that this document, I think, is intended to, to probably go beyond what the original intent was as far as being a blueprint for downtown, but also to assist you in, in putting together the funding plans, both for the next budget in relation to downtown as well as the levy for the broader city.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Don.
And I, I just want to emphasize, and I hope I'm right, that passing a resolution, which I'm all for doing this evening, doesn't guarantee the funding.
No.
I mean, the, the funding has to...
They still have to come back.
Has to come back to council, and we have to have a discussion on it. But I, I don't want the public to say, oh, they pass this plan and it says you should hire an arts director and you should hire this, that the city is just going to go out and start hiring people without going through our normal budget process.
Nope.
Well, and I would say several of the larger projects too, I mean, we, we had a great amount of public involvement through this process, but there is a lot more that's going to have to happen for each of these individual process, processes, like the piazza, for example. That's already part of your capital improvement program. There'll be a public involvement process with that, or some of the city, or some of the street conversions, which are, you know, already in, in the plans for second and, and third. That's also a public process. So, yeah, the, the plan provides the framework, but it doesn't, you know, it doesn't promise that all of those things are going to happen exactly, you know, as they are, so.
Mr. President?
Please, Randy.
Yeah, this is a great line of questioning, thanks Caroline for bringing it up. Yeah, so can we sort of leave here then with a common understanding of, of your, really what those early next steps are? And maybe others understand it and I, I don't quite, but, so I'm really excited about this plan also, and I want to thank everybody that's been involved. And I guess our, our staff would then take it and sort out some of the things really are not that, that money, I mean, they're, they're not that hard to find the money for, but of course, many of them are, are quite inexpensive, and we'll want to attach a timeline to it. I imagine we could talk it at the council retreat, probably is, is one opportunity to discuss it. But is there, is there sort of a next steps laid out for, for this that I'm not aware of?
I can...
And it's okay if there's not, I mean, I just, it'd be good to sort of lay it out now, probably.
We can certainly make that part of the retreat and, and talk about next steps. I think staff could come back and say, we've got, as you said, we've got the quick wins, short-term and longer-term, so we can, we can come back to you with some suggestions on how we might want to approach some of those and begin to, begin to prioritize those for your consideration.
Now, and as an example, in, in my department, community and economic development, we've, we've been approached while we've been doing the plan by outside parties that have said, you know, we'd like what you guys are doing, we'd like to be a part of it, so how can we get started on our little piece of the pie? Two examples, one, a food cart pod demonstration project that the Washington State, Washington State Food Truck Association wants to be a part of. They've kind of been waiting on the sidelines some, until the, the plan's adopted tonight. They've selected a location that's owned by the city, and then want us to work with them to get that permitted and open in the spring. So that's one that we've been holding off, but, you know, we can actually, we get the benefit of having an outside organization that can handle that. It, it'll just involve staff with typical permitting processes. The South Renton Connection Neighborhood Group wants to do something with their public art funding that they have. They might be able to do an, an early start on one of these projects, just to kind of define where district is, that's, that's kind, that's kind of pointed out in the plan. That would be a nice way to kind of get that started, even though the project itself might be several million dollars down the road. So I think that in community and economic development, we're looking at those opportunities. And I think some of the other departments will be looking at the quick wins too for 2018 to see what options there might be there as well.
So, yeah, good topic then, probably for the council retreat.
Yes, I agree.
Yep, good.
Any other questions or comments? I'd like to say on behalf of staff that we really appreciate the council's support in this process throughout. You know, in a lot of communities that I've worked in, the council doesn't allow you to allow them to be brought into the planning process. And I think that's been one of the most gratifying aspects of this, is that as elected representatives, you've, you've allowed us to allow you to be a part of it, and you've responded wonderfully, and you've been involved, and we really appreciate that. And I, I think the plan is better for it, and I, I'm hoping that the broader community support is there because of that as well. Thank you very much.
All right, I have a committee report. Committee of the Hold recommends concurrence in the planning commission and staff recommendation to approve adoption of the Renton Downtown Civic Core Vision and Action Plan dated January 2018. The committee further recommends that the resolution regarding this matter be presented for reading and adoption. Any concerns with me signing this committee report? All right. All right, it is signed. Is there anything else?
No.
All right, we are adjourned 15 minutes early.
All right, thank you.